Get it, the blue thing on the bar. Evening.
Hi. Bob's recording all set?
It is, I just want to make sure everybody that the only people that should have their mics on now are staff and ZBA members.
All right, I have 6:59, Brian. All right, um, welcome everybody to the Bridgewater zoning board of appeals. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No inter, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded and within 48 hours will be posted. There'll be a posting of the recording on the town website. Following members of zoning board of appeals are participating tonight remotely. Myself, Brian Heath, Chair, Anna Klimas, Vice Chair, Dan Greenberg, Member. Excuse me, during, during this meeting, all votes will be taken as a roll call vote. Also, the following Bridgewater Town staff participating remotely. Robert Ruly, Director of Community and Economic Development, Steve Solari, Building Commissioner. At this time, everybody's mic is muted, the board's mics will be unmuted throughout the whole meeting. And as it appears on the agenda, the project representatives' mics will be unmuted. The project is a public hearing and allows for public comment. We'll ask that you use the chat feature to ask your questions by listing your name and your address and your question. Chair will recognize all questions in order. You can also use the raise your hand feature in the participant menu. And you'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name, address before asking a question. If you're on a phone, you can use the star nine, which is the raise your hand feature. Same thing will, you'll be recognized, state your name, your address and your question. So we're going to start the meeting now. We have three items on the agenda. One was a carryover from the last meeting. It's a request for a special permit in relation to section 5.3.1. It's a permissible change to a non-conforming structure. The applicants are Mr. And Mrs. Sosa. It's 596 Main Street, Bridgewater. The applicants or their representative here today.
The Susas are here and I believe their attorney Joyce is also here.
Oh, there he is. All right, I see him. Okay, um, why don't you walk us through your request? And, uh, and the rhyme and reason rationels for the zoning board of appeals to grant this special permit, we appreciate it.
Uh, yes, um, again, my name's Edward Joyce, I represent the, the Susas. And, um, the Susas had filed a plan that was prepared by Michael Koska that I believe was forwarded to everybody on the ZBA. If nobody, if, um, just want to confirm that everybody has that because it'll be very, you know, helpful in walking everybody through that.
Yes.
Okay, um, so the, uh, the Susas are requesting, uh, you know, a special permit uh, for a non-conforming use with respect to a side boundary on their property. And the, um, as you can see from the, the, the proposed dwelling location plan prepared by uh, Mr. Michael Koska, who's a registered land surveyor and engineer, that the, uh, proposed, uh, property that are proposed structure that, that they're kind of going to be replacing their existing structure that was destroyed in a, in a fire earlier this year. That actually is a, uh, it, it actually decreases the non-conformity as it's significantly back from where their existing structure was. Uh, that has been totaled and will be, it was, which was declared a total loss and which will be demolished as part of their rebuilding. Uh, the, the, the Susas suffered a, a, a fire loss in February of this year. They have been living in a trailer home on their property since March of this year. And, uh, as you can see from, uh, Mr. Koska's plan, the, uh, the prop, the, the, the proposed structure that they're going to and proposed dwelling that they're going to build is significantly back from the, the, the property line uh, between them and the, um, Crizolli's, uh, which are to the, um, the northeast of them. The, uh, this, the, the, the request for any, or for, for this non-conforming special permit is, um, not going to have any substantial detriment on the, on the neighborhood and they're asking that it be allowed. They are both, both on their side variances as well as the rear variances of the property. Uh, we do, we do recognize that there have been some objection, or a, a objection that has been lodged by, uh, some abutters towards the rear of the property. Uh, the Barrys and their attorney. Uh, however, the, um, the, the, the dispute in that litigation that is ongoing, uh, does not really deal with the area that's in question. The, there, there has been a counterclaim brought by the, by the Susas in that litigation with respect to the boundary line. However, where it, um, where it applies to the abutting property and the Crizolli's, they've agreed to drop their counterclaim as adverse possession of any kind of, um, uh, any land there. But the, with respect to the Barrys, that is well beyond any kind of, um, zoning setback on the back of the property. And therefore, there's really no issue, uh, here and, and, and the, the the Susas would request that, that, that this board allow their, their request and their application so that they can proceed to rebuild their house, which is going to probably take approximately six months from, from today at the earliest. And allow them to move out of the, the mobile home that they've been living on in the property since March.
All right, uh, I just, before we go, uh, to a public, Anna or Dan, do you have any, uh, questions from Mr. Joyce?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right, um, I'm pretty much all set. I've reviewed the file, we've had it for quite a while, um, kind of, a- as you said, I mean, you're looking for a special permit, you know, to reconstruct a non-conforming structure. And as you pointed out and as, as seen on the plans, the proposed structure is actually less non-conforming than the existing structure. So if, at this time, if we would, we can open it up to public comment, Bob? Or questions?
So I believe, uh, Robert Stowe has his hand raised and he may, or I believe his counsel for a, a butter, but Mr. Stowe, if you just identify your name, address and affiliation, please.
I'm, uh, Robert Stowe, I do represent, um, Mary Ann and, uh, Mr. Bar, Mr. Barry, Brian, Barry, who are direct abutters and have a right of way that goes directly from the back of their property along the Susas property and goes on to the Susas property. That case is in litigation. Part of the boundary line that borders the top of the plan you're looking at is in question, is in, is in dispute, there has been no motion to vacate an adverse possession claim that has been lodged by the Susas in that lawsuit, so that's, is pending action over that particular boundary line. Uh, as far as the, uh, the non-conforming use, um, if we look at the zoning on this, the zoning for the minimum lot sizes, if we look at the RC, um, residential C, the requirement for a two-family for the RC, because as you can see from the plan, RC and our resident C and residence D transect this, this property. The requirements for two-family under residential C is 37,000 square feet. If we do the math, uh, on the plan that's here, going from the middle of the swimming pool forward, we've got 26,245.62 square feet. So under residential C, they don't have enough land to meet the minimum lot size requirements. If you look at residence D, which would be the front part of the plan, or going toward the street, they would need, according to the plan that's there and according to the, uh, requirements for minimum lot sizes, they would need, uh, 20,000 square feet. If we do the math from that, from the swimming, uh, from resident D forward, they only have 14,433.52 square feet. So under both lot zoning minimum sizes for RC and RD, they don't have enough land to substantiate even a single, uh, uh, singles residence, let alone a duplex, which is two. Further, uh, for the table of re-dimensional requirements, uh, they have to have for a, um, for the frontage, they have to have 125 feet for a single-family home. For a two-family, they need 150 feet. Uh, they have 89 feet. They don't meet any of the requirements to put in this, this particular property. The side setbacks is 20 feet. Uh, we have 15 feet to the rear of the property. We have 10.4 feet to the front of the property. Now that 10.4 feet, you'll see that's, half of that is taken up by the right of way. So the right of way is adversely affected by that because we'll be driving within three or four feet of the house that that's put there, assuming a duplex is put there. Um, the aesthetics of this, uh, this will detract from the visual character and quality of the neighborhood. Uh, all the houses on the neighborhood face Main Street. The proposed structure is turned sideways in order to fit its massive 102-foot-long building onto the property. If you compare the size of the, um, the size of the, uh, existing dwelling with the size of the proposed dwelling, it's not an insubstantial change, this is a substantial change. It's almost twice, or it looks like it's 100% greater than the existing dwelling. So we've got a building now that's going to be faced sideways, not conforming with any other character of the neighborhood. It's going to be twice the size, they're asking for actually relief. Uh, it'll expand on the non-conforming, uh, uh, building by more than 100%. And one of the things you looked under, Article 6.3 is the harmony and scale of the project, the bulk and mass and density of it. So the density of this project is twice that of what it currently is. Uh, it's, it's scale is not in harmony at all with the neighborhood. It's non-conforming, it's a non-conforming use. It, it duplex, it looks to increase the non-conforming structure by 100%. And, you know, this is a pro, this is, the property is, is, um, not an, not a, a, an issue, there is no issue of unique soil condition, shape, or topography. It is part of the, this part of the building, I'm sorry, this part of the lot, which would afford them some sort of variance. Um, there are, as I said, there are several things wrong with their plan. Uh, they should, they should just build a single-family house like everyone else in the street that's facing uh, Main Street and they can build it and they could conform with all the, all the laws and rules and zoning variances to the extent that they already do. Um, again, this should be denied. Uh, the project is just too dense for the neighborhood, uh, with density, it does not exist. Uh, and as, of course, they're expanding on a non-conforming use and all side setbacks, fronts, front, uh, frontage, um, it, it just is in violation of the code. So we ask you to deny the, the plan as it currently exists and we still have to like figure out what we're doing in the litigation. Thank you.
Do we have any, any other comments from the public on this? You're muted, Bob.
Apologies, if somebody would like to comment, either use the raise your hand feature, if you have your camera on, raise your hand. I'm sure Mr. Joyce would like to respond to Mr. Stowe's comment.
I'm sure, I, I just want, uh, one quick question to Steve. In, in regard, the only thing brought before us from your letter was the, um, the not, the 5.3.1, the reconstruction of the non-conformity.
Correct, this is a legal non-conforming two-family.
Right.
Which was constructed.
I thought it was a two-family.
Built before zoning. Um, it is less non-conforming to the, uh, right-hand side, as you've seen. And the addition to the property, which is going forward, uh, is not causing any more non-conformity to the frontage, a front setback. Uh, it's going from a two-story building down to a one-story, as, as I, I presume. Um, so basically, as far as saying that it doesn't need any type of variance, it's a legal non-conforming structure being rebuilt and under 40A, it would fall under a special permit, no variance is required because he's not going any closer to any setback than the existing house that was there.
And so we don't, because it is a, in existing two-family currently and non-conforming, we don't have to get into the issue of the rez, rez D, rez C.
Not, not, that shouldn't have been brought up at all because, again, it's a legal non-conforming, built before zoning. I don't even know why that was even brought up.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. Joyce, did you have some additional comments?
I would just speak to the litigation that is pending in Brockton District Court and, uh, in, in particular with respect to the, the boundary line between the, um, the Susas property and the, uh, Crizolli's property. Uh, I, I, we, there was a recent survey done as, as you have before you by, by, uh, Mr. Koska. And after receiving that recently, I did reach out or, and contacted, um, the Barrys, uh, counsel, uh, attorney Stowe and indicated to him that, that we would be willing to drop our uh, counterclaim in that lawsuit for adverse possession of the land along that boundary line that we had felt had been encroaching. So that there, there is, uh, we're, we're, uh, the Susas are, are willing to completely, uh, to, to live with the, 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 the survey that was done and drop any, uh, claim of adverse possession. There, there are some, still some disputes, um, significantly back from, uh, Main Street between the, the Susas and the Barrys with respect to their, their, their common bond, boundary line. Uh, but those are well beyond any kind of setback issues and they're really irrelevant. So, uh, we would, we would ask that the, that the, that the board allow the petition and the application, I'm sorry.
Bob, do we have anybody?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Bob and Judy, um, have a hand raised. No, she's shaking her head, no, sorry.
Um, I just want to state for the record that, uh, the board did receive a letter from Monica and Joe, I'm going to butcher this, Kazo, Zoli?
Rizzola, yes.
Yes, okay.
With a, with a Q.
They're adjacent to the uh, Susas at, uh, 598. Um, they're unable to attend, attend tonight due to family matters, but, uh, as residents abutting, the Susas, uh, they're in support, full support of the Susas' request to demolish and reconstruct the building, uh, at their home at 596 Main Street. That was devastated by fire. Is, is there anything else that needs to be added? Bro, con?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's no more hands then, um, Bob, I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment section.
Is there a motion in a second?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
A second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Call vote, please.
Hi.
All right, so the motion to close the public portion of this is passed. Um, would any of my associate members care to make a motion and request in relation to the Susas' request for, excuse me, special permit under section 5.3.1, a permissible change to a non-conforming structure?
Sure, I'll make a motion to, um, issue a special permit, uh, for the property at 596 Main Street.
I would second that request.
All in favor? Anna?
Hi.
Dan?
Hi.
And I voted aye as well, uh, special permit is granted for the Susa property at 596 Main Street. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
All right. The next item on the agenda, um, is a uh, request for a setback variance, uh, from the, from Mr. Monkis at 16 Saddle Drive. Um, I see that they are here.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Well, I had to get another, I had it on, set up on my phone and then I got a laptop and then I couldn't hear anything on the phone, so I got a, let another laptop set up, but.
Okay, we've been provided with, um, all the information and some, you're looking, so you're looking to get a 6.9-foot variance to it, to the 20-foot side setback variance under section 4.2 requirements.
Correct.
For the addition of a, an extension of an existing garage on your property?
Yes, sir.
Um, just trying to get this here. All right. Do you want to just walk us through what it is you're trying to do and, and why you're requesting the variance?
Well, I just, I just want to extend the, uh, existing garage and extend it back toward the backyard another 16 feet. Then, uh, you know, um, it's, and, and I'm also putting a new septic system in at the same time. Uh, because that's an original septic system and they already got an approval from the Board of Health, um, for a waiver on the, uh, because the slab would be so close to the, uh, the septic pipe. And, uh, then, you know, my neighbors, you know, uh, on the same side that, rather, the property line runs diagonal, he's all good with it, um. He, you know, he's, he gave his, uh, approval on that.
I was going to ask you, if, if you're looking at your property, the neighbor to the light, to, to like, to the left would be the most impacted.
Correct, yeah, he's the one that got a letter from, um, the one, yeah, I believe you have it, uh, he lives on 8 Bridle Road.
I don't see a letter, that's what I was going to ask. Um, where'd you go, Bob? Did we get a letter on this? I, I didn't, I don't see a letter regarding this in the package.
Because I, I gave it to, I dropped it off at the, uh, zoning board, uh, the planning board. And I gave them all the, the, you know, the letter and, uh, the waiver for the, from the Board of Health and also from the, uh, surveyor.
Okay. Um.
But he's good, you know, he's, he's encouraged me to, you know, go for a, uh, variance because of the shape of the, odd shape of the property. You know, on the, on the opposite side, it's a straight line almost back. But, you know, it's a, I got 100, 160-foot frontage and then it goes down to the rear of the property. The property boundary line goes down the, uh, just under 85 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm looking at, you know, a 55-square-foot section, uh, with a, you know, where it would be and, you know, I'd still have 13.1 feet, um, to the boundary line.
Hannah or Dan, do you have any questions you want to ask Mr. Monkis?
Um, yeah, have you, um, considered any other design options that, um, that would actually accommodate, you know, the system within the boundaries? Are there alternate designs?
I, I did at one point, I was going to make the, you know, the one wall, you know, to the diagonal property, uh, at an angle. But then I'd lose all the square footage. And then I was going to, thinking about a shed roof, you know, instead of a, it's knocking out the back and, and then I talked to an engineer and he just said, that's, that's not the right way to, you know, build a property, uh, the building, so. He said, you're better off just go straight back, you know, the way the, uh, you know, garage is constructed now. And actually, the, the existing garage is built better than the house. It's, you know, all two-by-six construction and this is two-by-four, but which I would, you know, uh, incorporate into the new addition also.
Do we have, um, Bob, anybody, if you want to open this up for a public comment?
I would just ask if somebody wants to comment, either use the raise your hand feature or if you've got your camera on, raise your hand. And I do not see any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, without anybody there, then I'd just make a, ask one of my fellow members to make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this.
Make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing?
Like, yeah, public comment section, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Sorry.
The comments on the public hearing section.
Dan?
I will second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, okay, so we're closing, closing the public comment section. Um, would either Dan or Anna care to make a motion in regards to the Monkis' uh, request for the special permit under five, um, 4.2 side setback? Guler, Guler?
Yeah, um, I was just looking at the plans again.
Me too.
And you, you didn't find a letter from, uh, my neighbor and, and the.
It wasn't, Mr. Monkis, it wasn't in the package that was forwarded to us. That's the, that's the, and, and for, for my, me personally, uh, the 13 feet is sufficient, especially due to the high shape of the lot and the fact that your neighbor isn't contesting or making any issues. I, I did drive by, I know there's a lot of abrevieties there, so it's, it's not a visual issue.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can, you know, I have a copy of the letter here, but, um, I don't know why, why you guys didn't get it, but anyway. He's, he's not contesting at all and, um, you know, my other neighbor on the opposite side, he says, oh, you want us to go to the meeting and I said, no, it's all online. You know, because in the past, it's always been in person, but.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the special permit request under 4.2 side setback. For 16 Saddle Drive.
Uh, Dan, would you like to make a second on the, uh, motion to approve the special permit?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Hannah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so, uh, special permit is granted for a side setback in the amount of uh, variance, special permit for 6.9 feet. Uh, Steve?
Yeah, this isn't a, a special permit, this is a variance, straight variance.
Yeah, I was looking at it, it says a special permit, I'm like, but this is a setback, it's a variance.
This is a straight variance.
Yeah.
I amend my motion to approve.
I amend my motion to approve.
So we, we've, let, let's, let's do it. So there's no issues here. So Hannah, if you would just restate the granting of the variance for the setback in the amount of 6.9 feet under 4.2?
Certainly. So I'd make a motion to approve the variance for 16 saddle drive under 4.2 side setback in the amount of 6.9 feet.
Second?
I will second that.
All right. All in favor? Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The variance is granted for, as we said, 16 saddle drive for side setback in the amount of 6.9 feet. Good luck, Mr. Monkus.
Okay, thank you very much.
Certainly. Okay, the last item on the agenda is a request for an extension for a 40B project of the village at Milebrook-Avery Place. Who's representing the applicant here?
Peter Freeman, if you can hear me and see me.
Yes, sir. So Mr. Freeman, this is one that's come before us many times.
It has.
To be honest, the last time it came before us, we were very hesitant to grant it, but we did stating that this was it, guys. You know, you gotta do something, we're, we're not gonna grant anymore. So if, if you would help us understand why the board should.
Absolutely, and I can tell you quite candidly, I was going to say even before what you said, and I am familiar with that history. Start off in a way that's unusual. I readily acknowledge that if you don't grant an extension, there's a good chance, if it were appealed, that the Housing Appeals Committee would probably not necessarily uphold you. Because I'm well aware of the history, as you probably know, I do a lot of 40B work and I'm familiar with, with the case law. And although the Housing Appeals Committee and the case law basically bends over backwards to grant extensions, what you said is absolutely true. And I wouldn't have accepted the request to represent the applicant for this extension, but for the fact I do think they're extenuating circumstances. And if you are so inclined, I would say it may be out of human kindness that you grant just a six month extension, and I'll explain that briefly. So the previous developer, the trust, has assigned the, the permit and all of the property to the company owned by Mr. Beach New Brunswick Investment Limited, LLC, rather. Mr. Beach, the principal, was gonna be here, but he didn't have video access and for some reason, he told me, he texted me that the passcode or meeting ID for the phone connection didn't work. Now, maybe he dialed wrong, I don't know, but that's why he's not here. And so what happened is, with the past extensions and as extended by the Permit Extension Act back well over a year ago, it was in 2022, I worked with Mr. Beach and at the time, the principal of the then permit holder, Mr. Chipman. And worked with Mr. Solari and it was agreed essentially that if work was started before April 8th, which was the date that the Permit Extension Act extended the permit, then the permit would have been perfected within the time period. There was, there were beginning of roads, putting in, put in utilities, demolition permit. So what happened is, unfortunately, that's around the time, right after that, that Mr. Beach was diagnosed with cancer. And I don't mean to be playing on your heartstrings, I'm just stating the facts, and that's why I say it may, may well be that if you grant an extension, it would be out of human kindness. I do understand the precedent and I'm not gonna, you know, argue with you on that. So what happened is, it would have been, we believed that there was a good chance that he would have been able to continue and perfected the permit. I also subsequently spoke with Mr. Solari. And in fact, I copied it on, copied him on my September letter requesting this extension to make sure that if he felt I unintentionally misstated what our discussion was, because it was a little vague with the, with the Permit Extension Act and the six months extension that was granted, it, it's susceptible, the expiration date is susceptible of being viewed as October 8th, 2023. Because if you add six months to the April 8th, 2023 date under the Permit Extension Act. And of course, Mr. Solari is here, it's kind of a moot point now because it would have been great if Mr. Beach, his company, could have perfected the permit prior to October 8th or even back when he started, but unfortunately, he did become ill. I don't want to represent that it's definitely terminal, but it's very serious and I apologize that he's not here. So he's, he had sought after that time period to find another buyer. One buyer fell through. He does have it under agreement with a woman named Angela Chin, who was a builder, I think she built in the area. And so the, essentially, the sole reason that he couldn't do it after all this time is his illness. And again, I'm not gonna really say anything else, it's not really very legalistic, the facts are the facts. And he wasn't able to start it by the, by the time it would have lapsed. And so we requested it prior to October 8th and you do have the, the right to extend it. Just so you folks know, this is an insubstantial request, an insubstantial change request, which most extensions are. And if you are not inclined to be favorable to the extension, just so you refresh your memory as to the regulations for 40B, what you would do is not actually deny the extension tonight, you would deny a finding, you would make a finding that it's substantial, not insubstantial. And then you would have to have a public hearing on it. We would certainly appreciate the discussion and the feedback because, you know, depending on how you react, you know, I'm again, gonna be very candid and practical, that's the kind of where I am. It may be pointless to have a public hearing, you know, go to the trouble and all of that, but that is what the procedures would call for, depending on the outcome of tonight. So I would simply sum up with that, it's a very unusual situation. And I would ask you on behalf of my client that you give this project one more chance, just six months, and, you know, we know that would be it. Thank you very much.
Uh, Anna or Dan, do you have any questions for Mr. Freeman?
No questions.
I'd just like some clarification for your statement at the end on what would happen pending a negative decision on this? And maybe even Bob could rule in, could weigh in on that as well?
Sure. I think what you're asking about is what I just said at the end, under the 40B regulations, it's kind of a two-step process. The regulations give an applicant seeking an extension the right to request it based on the, the extension being typically considered an insubstantial change. And under the 40B regulations, you can address that and make a finding of insubstantiality, meaning the extension would be granted at a meeting like this without notice to a butters. It's a meeting obviously under the open meeting law, it was on the agenda properly, but it's not a public hearing with a legal ad and notice to a butters. So that's the distinction. And because of that two-step process, I mean, denying a finding that it's insubstantial might be tantamount to indicating that you just can't see your way to approving an extension. But technically, under the regulations, what you would have to do is make a finding, one way or the other, that it either is, is substantial or, it, it rather is, you agree that it's insubstantial and it would be granted, or you would find that it's a substantial change. And then there would be a hearing, public hearing, the normal type of public hearing scheduled within 30 days.
I don't know if, if Bob wants to comment on that.
Yeah, Dan, I would just, I, I would have to defer to Attorney Rollins, the town's attorney, whether or not, you know, the actual extension had expired prior to the request to extend. And I'm not taking issue with what Mr. Freeman said, I'm not a lawyer. But there might be some extenuating circumstances that might be different than what Mr. Freeman is, is representing.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman, about when did the, uh, the applicant, well, I guess, who's the applicant now, the new owner or the?
Yeah, the, well, the.
Mr. Beach?
He, yes, it's Mr. Beach's company, which is, I believe it's called New Brunswick Investment LLC. And that's where I sent, along with my letter dated September 28th, 23, I attached the assignment and assumption agreement showing that the, the current holder of the permit has assigned it to Mr. Beach's company. And further based on the regulations, which I know they're unique and no reason you would keep up on them, but an applicant under 40B, if there's a transfer, doesn't actually have to get the approval of his zoning board for the transfer. What happens now under the regulations is that the new owner would go through the process of final approval. That's a term of art, a legal term, under the regulations with the agency, which is Mass Housing. And if the agency were to approve the transfer and approve the, you know, final changes, they would issue a, a letter to that effect. And the regulations state that the owner or the applicant, rather, the new developer, simply has to send a copy of that approval to the zoning board. So that is another step, where they view it as additional protection, that somebody can really finally do this project, meaning that if Mass Housing, which does scrutinize it, you know, if Mass Housing were to issue that final approval, then, you know, then whether you would get notice of it, then, you know, presumably, there's a little more strength to the view that, you know, the, the new applicant. And again, to be clear, the new applicant at this point, we, we say that, we say legally, Mr. Beach's company is the transferee at this point. But just to be clear, this company hasn't gone through the final approval process with the ZBA. So it would be the buyer that he had, I'm sorry, with, with Mass Housing. So it would be the, the buyer from Mr. Beach's company that would go to Mass Housing for the final approval.
And, and again, I, I'll just say that, that all might be true, but I think that the presumption is, is that, that all happened before the permit expired. The permit has expired. And so what Mr. Freeman is saying, it might be true, but I don't know that any of that is applicable if the permit has expired.
Right, because then you have to go in the whole.
I, I, I don't disagree. I don't, if, if it, if it, if it has expired, then, as you just said, Mr. Jim, and the whole process of starting with a project eligibility application would have to commence again, and if a letter was issued, then file a new application with the ZBA. The argument is, and, you know, as I say, I had discussed it, and that doesn't mean that what Mr. Solari and I discussed is, is, is the viewpoint necessarily. But in a nutshell, because it was a bit ambiguous, it was, it's ambiguous only because of the Permit Extension Act, which did extend it. And at one point, you would extend it, the final time that you actually took action. It was extended, I think it was until January of '22, February, whatever it was, the, the, that was a six months extension. Oh, that's right, it was six months, it would have been July of 2022. But then I realized, and mea culpa, right, said it, I went up to it in the letter that I sent you folks in June of 2022, the Permit Extension Act actually extended it on its own past the July date that you had given. It was the following year, April of this year, it was April of '23. But because there had been a six month extension granted, you know, the argument, and there's no case law, but the argument is that if you add six months to the Permit Extension Act deadline of April 6th, that would bring it to, April 8th, rather, that would bring it to October 8th. And that's what I discussed with Mr. Solari and, you know, again, I think, and I might have misunderstood, that's why, again, why it was, why I copied him on the letter. I might have misunderstood, but I thought that his view, what is, was it, was that if the project had commenced in the normal sense with serious work that was continuing, construction work, that the permit would have been perfected. And I agree that that certainly moot now because it wasn't done.
Right. And, and, and the only thing, Mr. Freeman, too, is that, again, this has come before us quite a bit and you know, as bad as I feel for anybody who has cancer or, or any health, I don't know when it was di, you know, when he was diagnosed, but there was, there, there was a lot of time to get, just line somebody up to do something to perfect the permit. And as Mr. Rulie is kind of alluded to, the permit itself now is expired, so it's not an extension of the permit. Well, I guess we, we'd be going back, but it's an expired permit.
Well, if you were to make, if you were to make a finding that, that, what, what the law, let me just back up one step. If October 8th is the date, then the case law 40B regulations say, as long as the request to extend was prior to that date, then it's not expired. If you don't believe that it was extended until October 8th, then clearly, it's way past April of 2023. I can't disagree with.
Yeah, I'm, our extension was very specific as to the date of the extension. So it, you know, the fact that the, that the state came in and extended it beyond that, well, that was a Benny to Mr. Beach's company. I'm, I hear you, you're advocating for your client, that's admirable, it's what we do. But I don't see it as an add-on to that, because it was a specific date given in the extension.
I understand.
And I would just say that, you know, again, to, to kind of echo what Mr. Chairman said, completely sympathetic to your client and his, caught in his health issues, you know, but unfortunately, we can't make decisions based on kindness or, you know, sympathy. And so, again, similarly, I remember this case and I'm Southern and there's a country song that says, one more last chance. And we, we were very clear at the last time, this is your one more last chance. I, I think it's well beyond that one more last chance, despite the, the circumstances.
Yeah. No, again, I, you know, I'm a straight shooter and advocating is one thing, but pretending things is, is not what I do and I can't, I can't disagree with that.
No, I appreciate your candor. Thank you.
Hannah or Dan, if you don't have any questions, I'd, I'd ask Bob to open it up to see if there's any public comments in regards to this.
Mr. Jamian, you have your hand up, if you don't mute yourself, Ray, and just identify yourself, name and address, please.
Okay, let me see if I can do this.
We can hear you, right?
Yeah, Ray Jamian, 221 Orange Road. I remember, first of all, I'm on the planning board, just to make it clear. I remember this project, what, 11 years ago, 10 years ago?
It's a long time ago.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll be clear and simple. Being on the planning board, we've offered extensions, I think, I think in one or two projects, maybe two or three over a period of six months a year, never anything this long. I think when you go beyond a year or two, you should start over. And when, when you're talking about a project that was presented to you 12 years ago, 11 years ago, I think in my, my mind, you start from scratch. I'm not saying the project is good or bad, I'm just saying with new zoning, everything, I think start from scratch, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. Anyone else?
Chairman, Mr. Jason Hoffman has his hand up as well. Mr. Hoffman, I would just ask that your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Jason Hoffman, 173 Center Street. I, I, I just wanna, you know, I was, I've been part of this for 12 years. You know, my first child wasn't even born when this all started. And it, it sounds, not knowing all of the, the intricate details of the extensions, but I was on the, I was present on the last meeting when, when the ZBA made the extension. And I don't know if anyone really knew about the Extension Act because of COVID, but it sounds like double dipping to me. And, and it sounds like if the ZBA did know that they, that this, 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 this wouldn't have even been a meeting. You would have automatically had your extension, but it sounds like you're trying to piggyback six months on top of six months. And I don't know that the ZB, ZBA would have, would have allowed that if, I don't know when this came about, it just sounds like it's double dipping and at the, at, at the expense of, of a zoning board that, you know, had the control taken out of their hands at that point.
But to your point, Mr. Hoffman, we, we wouldn't have been required to grant any extension had we been aware of the state's extension, so that meeting wouldn't have happened. But we did, and as I said earlier, our extension was very specific as to the date, which was before the state's permitted extension.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think this time Judy really is raising.
Judy really wants to get on.
Just, if you could unmute.
You have to unmute.
Please, and then identify yourself, your name and address, please.
There you go.
Okay, here you go. You might need to turn up your volume.
Yourself. You're muted.
Still nothing, yeah.
Damn, you're muted. We can't hear you. If you'd like, you could put your comments into the chat and I can read that. Do you have anything for us, Bob? We did not mute you. You muted yourself. We, we have not muted you. You're, you're, you're muted yourself. I can ask you to unmute. At the beginning of the meeting, but not now. There is something in the chat that I believe that Judy said she agrees with Ray. But I don't. Lips, or can't read lips. Talking heads on her lips are moving, but she's not saying anything.
Yeah, so we could hear her now. I said, I shook my head, no. We're having a conversation, Judy and I, yeah, so.
Still talking, but can't. I think she's throwing the towel in.
This does, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, this does happen. I don't know if you could ask her to raise her hand if she hears you. And then you could just ask her, do you support or oppose the extension?
Judy, can, can you hear me? Yes? Can you hear me?
Raise your hand. Raise your, yeah.
If, if you're in support of the motion, if you're in support of this motion, keep your hand up. If not, put it down, please.
In support of the application, I don't
For the application, for the, for the extension. If you're in support of the extension, raise your hand. If not, keep it down. Okay, so we, we've got her.
And, and in her, uh, chat, she says she opposed.
Okay. Are there any other public comments from it?
Um, Mr. Hoffman.
Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Hoffman has his hand up.
Go ahead, please. Can you hear me? Okay.
We can.
First of all, thank you for letting me, um, talk. I live at one sixty-three Center Street, Bridgewater. I'm the closest button to the property. Um, as you guys know, this has been an ongoing stuff. I actually had a few, now I guess, questions. Um, and actually some of them, you know, I think, but if I go through them real fast, then you can answer them as you thought or think. First of all, I don't think it should be extended. They've had more than enough time and more than enough people going through that something should have started by now. And the only thing that has started is they threw down some sand, some peystone, kind of looked like a driveway, but it ain't nothing. And they cut down a bunch of trees that are still just sitting there and everything got grown in. But anyways, I believe they have, they have had more than enough time. Um, my four little questions are easy. The first one, being a forty B, I mean, I think the town is in compliance. It may be, it may not. This project may not be needed anymore as far as the town goes for compliance. Um, my second kind of question is really, how many times can you give an extension without nothing going on? And then, and then my other question is, or thing is, I don't know if anybody's really looked at this plan and actually the plot plan. When this first came about, um, I brought up the subject about my boundaries and I was told if I had a problem with it, then I should get my property surveyed. Of course, everybody knows or thinks they know where it is. So what I thought was my boundaries could have been questionable. But recently the property had been surveyed, not mine, but where this project is. And as I look at the markers that were placed, my property is where I thought it was and where I had said it. And with that in mind, at one point they had put, um, some stakes in to show where the houses would go. Um, also, and I can't remember the size, but there was going to be a little back porch, which was nice, which I said the back porch would definitely be on my property. Now, since it's been surveyed, that prop, that porch will actually be on my property. Um, so my biggest question there is, has anybody really looked at the plan that was given? And does it fit the property, which in my opinion doesn't, but you know, I, I don't know what else to say. And then the fourth thing I wanted to bring up was there's wetlands out there. And I don't know if this project had been, um, signed off by conservation, but one of the things were brought up and supposedly I had bought pitches and everything. In this wetland is quite a dump site, including oil, um, old motors, uh, lawn mowers, you know, that been thrown in. Of course, years ago, everybody threw stuff in your backyard and that's the way it was. But since the wetlands have been cleaned up in, in, in a lot of areas, I thought it was brought up that part of the project would be first to clean up the wetlands and get all that oil stuff and rusted stuff, whatever it is, out of there. Um, and, and of course, did, uh, um, I'm wondering is, if conservation ever came up with the exact measurements? Now, I know it's a hundred feet regular. I believe forty B, you can go fifty feet. I'm not sure. I don't know. I'm not up on all that, but I believe, again, like I said earlier, the plans just don't fit that neighborhood. I mean, it's just, it's too big for a small piece of property. And I don't think anybody's really looked at it. So as far as I'm concerned, to, to grant an extension would be wrong. To start from scratch, the owners and, and refurbish or make it fit, that could be another thing. But as far as I'm concerned, there's no need to grant a, an extension. It, it's just, this thing has been going on and it's just falling apart as, as we speak, I guess. I guess that's my comment. And if it made sense, I hope so.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Mr. Heath, the only thing I will add is that the town is above the ten percent.
Yes, I know. If it, if this project were not, if the extension had not lapsed, the fact that we're above when this was approved, doesn't have an interplay in that for the granting. You can't not grant the extension just because we are above the ten percent. But I, I don't think we really have to go there because this extension has lapsed.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Freeman?
Uh, ju- just out of respect to Mr. Hoffman, who just spoke, I can, I can answer the last three questions that he, that he asked. Actually, Larry Silva continued to work on the project from Silva Engineering, and they did go through the Conservation Commission, um, and received an order of conditions. Uh, I think I have a copy of the, uh, recorded, uh, order of conditions. Uh, again, I recognize it's essentially moot, um, but yes, that had been done. Uh, the second question as to the, the lot line, I have no knowledge one way or the other. But if this project were going forward, certainly Mr. Hoffman would have a right to contest the plan. And, you know, that would have to be worked out privately. Typically, those aren't matters for a zoning board. Certainly would be a matter if, you know, a project goes forward again and everybody would want the proper lot line. So it's helpful for Mr., it's helpful for Mr. Hoffman to say that. Third question was really, how many times can a project be extended and for how long? And, you know, essentially, Mr. Chairman, you answered that. It's certainly under the regulations with the discretion of the board. Uh, and in this case, the facts are the facts and it's been a long time and there were several extensions. Um, so essentially it, it, it all seems moot, but you know, for Mr. Hoffman, I did want to answer his questions.
And Mr. Chair, not to prolong this, but as the acting conservation agent for the town, the order of conditions has expired as well.
Well, i- if I'm misinformed, I apologize. I was told that, uh, that they went back and they, they got a new order of conditions. I believe a broker sent me a copy of the recorded order of conditions. But if you're the, you, you're the agent, if, if, if I'm wrong, I just want to make clear, I certainly would not intentionally misrepresent. Um, so if that's the case, then I stand corrected.
And I appreciate the clarification. However, this goes beyond the scope of what's before us. Um, uh, so bringing it back to what's before us, what's before us is the request for an extension. I think, um, Mr. Chairman, unless there's other questions, I'm ready to move forward.
Bob, if we have anybody else looking to make any more comments in the public forum?
I don't see any, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then if Dan or Anna would make a motion to close the comment, public comment section of this meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment section of this meeting.
Second. All in favor? Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And myself, I as well. Uh, so public, public comment section has been closed. If, uh, either Dan or Anna would care to make a motion in regards to the request for the extension of the Avery forty-three B project?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to deny the request for extension for the forty B project at Avery Place. Um, if we were to, uh, move forward with Mr. Freeman's recommendations or Attorney Freeman's recommendations, I would suggest that this would be a substantial change. But I don't know that we even need to do that because in my opinion, I think that it is expiring. So I, I think that, that, that there is no request for extension, but I, Bob, look to you as to how you'd like me to.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that as well, Bob, as, as Anna was speaking. Um, I was thinking is we're, we, we generally, the extension is granted on something that hasn't expired yet.
I didn't think that, I mean, right, I mean, I, I don't really think, you can't vote on an extension of something that's expired.
Right.
I would deny the request to request the extension. If that makes sense.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to help you folks, I, I don't think it matters and, uh, you know, often, obviously I have to talk to my client, but you know, it's more than just the writing on the wall. I respect everything you've said and what the neighbor said. Um, I don't, I think it would be perfectly fine if you vote to deny the request, uh, and state that, uh, because the permit had already expired, there is no standing to request an extension. I mean, that would cover it legally.
I think, I think that would, that would be best. I just want to get it straight because I didn't, I don't think we can deny the requests, well, well, deny the extension request, just deny the, the actual request for the extension.
Or Mr. Freeman could just withdraw the request.
We could, well, I, I'd have to check with my client.
Yeah.
Again, I, so I, I'm sorry, I can't do that. Normally he would be here. I, again, I apologize for his lack of ability to connect. Again, I do think it's efficient and you can hear the writing on the wall from my viewpoint, so to speak. I mean, if you
I just want, I just want the permit to be clear, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm, you know, again, I'm trying to help because I do understand what you're saying. So I think if a denial is based on the fact that the permit had expired, uh, and therefore no standing to seek an extension.
If you'd care to make a motion, Anna, to, to deny the request for the extension?
So I would make a motion to deny the request for extension, uh, given the fact that the, um, time period has already lapsed.
Uh, second, Dan?
I will second that.
All in favor? Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, I as well. Uh, the request has been denied.
I, I appreciate the time that you all folks took to be fair and give us a chance to talk. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Please send our best wishes to your client as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. At this time, uh, we don't have anything more on the agenda, so we, I would request a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting.
Uh, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, Dan, if you would second that?
I will second that.
All in favor? Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, I. So the public hearing portion of this has been, um, completed. So if you can remove everyone, Bob? The only other.
It's a, I can't remove people that are at a, they're entitled to be at the meeting. We're not in executive session, so if you want to stay, they can stay.
Yeah. Uh, I don't think there's any other business. I don't
I didn't see any minutes.
I didn't see minutes.
No, and I, I need to, I'll speak to Nicole, uh, and again, apologies for the letter from the butter and the previous application that wasn't included. Um, but yeah, if you can pick up the minutes, there's no minutes, so there's nothing to act on there. I don't have any other administrative matters. I don't know if Mr. Solari does. If, if not, then you can just move to adjourn. All right. Any of you have comments?
No, I think, um, appreciate everybody's help here. Um, we, if someone would care to make a motion to adjourn?
I would happily make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Anna?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Myself, I. Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Everybody.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.